I'll be and uh you have some pain trying to get there. Okay, moving on to item four. The Senate General, all items on the Senate General Considered to be Rooting to be enacted by one person without the judge. And remember the Governor's body requests the judge on the item, the item will be removed from the Senate General Considered Set. The Commission has had an opportunity to look at the Senate agenda. If you don't want to move it or discuss the item on that agenda, that would make this special. All in favor, aye. All opposed, aye. Aye, aye. Item five, public comment. Uh, I can see if anybody signed up. If anybody would like to speak, we'd be more than happy to open it up. Uh, for a public comment, it's not, I could have a vote if we could. Keep the public moving on. All in favor, aye. All opposed, aye. Aye, aye. Thank you. Moving on to item six, which is a good thing. Uh, Senator Brungus, thank you, sister. Mr. Beth is here to do his night. I'm a community outreach administrator, is that correct, Beth?
I'm the Assistant Corporate Manager.
Okay, now that's a good thing. But you know, they do such outstanding jobs here in our town. Beth, if you'd like to say any words that uh... Assistance for our people here in the county with people with needs, they do so much. And like I say, they do a ton of big outreach programming. How many years have you all been here, Beth?
Um, in this area, uh, full time, we've been here, we're going in about this year.
So, families in need, uh, I'd love to see you, Beth, if you'll come up, I think you're a wonderful visitor.
Then most of the time, also, the other, it's been about two weeks.
I have the town's value, like you mentioned, yes. And uh, I hope you keep the system, we get better as time goes on.
Well, I do appreciate this, and this will be such a good time to, to, to share everything, to share everything.
My last time. Okay, thank you so much, Beth. Thank you for coming out, Beth, and I hope, like I say, I hope in the future, you know, uh, we can make it a lot better, make it better, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you for everything, and if anybody needs anything, don't hesitate to call.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item seven, number two. Public here number one, President is not the purpose to consider race or act upon the proposed verdict considered beginning July one, twenty twenty-two and ending twenty thirty, twenty twenty-three, proposed verdict has been received to the Beverly Ward Commission, available for inspection in the town's first office at the Beverly Town Hall. Located at sixty-three River Road, Beverly Ward County, Iowa. Long hours from eight to four thirty, March two Friday. And the proposed verdict sunrise best follows. And Amy, are you going to go with that?
Yes, sir. Um, I can see the package there and pick up on the monitors, my people are hard to see it up there. Here are pictures of our budget, please, fifty-two and twenty-three. Uh, we have total revenues of three million, three hundred ninety-six dollars. It's like three million, five hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred twenty dollars. Of that, costing two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars is coming from property tax revenue. Uh, included in that is twenty-three, the previous net total one hundred dollars costing property tax extra, which is pretty. Other big revenue, bigger, seven hundred eighty thousand dollars in state sales taxes we collect. Where they expect to be more arts fund of three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. And the budget is eighty-three hundred, three hundred thousand dollars. Our total, I think we've got money sitting over from last year, from art fund of three hundred thirty-five thousand and from the debt spend that we have in the millions too. That gives our total budget of three million, three hundred ninety-six, four twenty. And that is a little bit of change to what's in the uh, uh, agenda there. The next last minute, Amy, does the weekend for there to be, so the budget is three million, three hundred ninety-six, four twenty. Uh, as far as expenditures are concerned, Governor's body has a budget of two hundred fifty thousand, three hundred dollars. Then on the station, six hundred fourteen thousand, one oh four. Uh, plan is a million, three thousand, four hundred thirty. And parks connected actions, a million, three forty-four, five thirty-three, which includes, including the mayor of uh, trust and profit, the board law. So the public spend here is three million, three hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred twenty dollars. But in its balance, it's one with the uh, state's energy, the property taxes. Um, some money being able to share with these here, kind of looking over those numbers. We get a little uh, report here on our property tax assessment. Uh, and it's just a little history of that. You can see there's green, really flagrant there, with what our current tax rate is. And uh, we're very low compared to everybody else in the town there, so I think that's one good thing. In the next case, we consider the rate right now is nine percent. We need to go up to twelve percent. We're still in the bottom ten of the cities in the new houses in town. And uh, still far from the top right there. Uh, and what is the three percent increase mean for the average person? Uh, we used to figure two hundred fifty thousand dollars for a house. Uh, at nine percent, at nine percent to one hundred, you're paying like two hundred twenty-five dollars a year in taxes. And if we go up to four thousand, then you'd be paying about three hundred dollars a year. So that's like a seventy-five dollar increase on your two hundred fifty thousand dollars home. We do, we do feel it's still a big model. Uh, the asset values for the folks who are becoming there in four years, the last asset is two thousand and nineteen. And if anyone's coming up in the next year, so, so, they should be in tax a little bit, because that's the fact right now, it's about what it is. What does the increase mean for us, in this city of Delville? Uh, that three cents is going to provide our costings with sixty-five thousand dollars in additional revenue for the town. That money is used for extended and in-in the parks. Uh, we have a lot of other potential infrastructure improvements that are kind of on the books and we need to get working on. And uh, and also provide funds through contracts for coal services that we're going to use against the town to continue to grow. Uh, there's several upcoming projects that we're currently working on. Um, two of these, the first, there's a list, they're free, I mean, the first two have already been approved by the state under the process of working on these projects. And even though the state's going to run, they fortunately do this project, they cannot manage it, uh, putting the magic in. And uh, that's a lot of what we need, that's that, it is a package for it to be completed. The bottom on there is not been approved yet, we're still waiting for funding on that. That project looks like it's going to be around two million dollars. And uh, that's a good package to be, to help, to take that. Uh, the vision, plan, city plan, it's stated by the town, uh, there's two priorities there. The first priority is spending Delville River Walk. We have enough of the great funds to do that or start on that. We're still seeking more great funds to help out on that. Always again, the additional tax increases is something that can really make it a bit longer. Project, project plan. Uh, I think that's mainly something there, though, when you hear it, it's something that's what you can do. I think I have any, where my mother's talking, she does, my mother, those all. I'm glad I can get a lot of people to hear anything about the tax increase. But all their way to catching them or saying, what's going on, they have a bill of tax increase. Then, then you, I think the average cost of one tax will be, be less than a hundred dollars a year. Most people are saying. Some things were asked too much, from ourselves. There's still being very low in the tax rate, like saying, asking the bill. And uh, with all the changes, best to do here, I think, is just bottom business, come back and get the project. We have improved, uh, label, they, uh, root system, walking, uh, things, and practice. Then second, we'll do the thing.
How different are the families in the Beverly Town, each of them, each of them, two times? And what's left, three times, how's the, and, 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 how many?
Thank you, Beth. Well, so well, yeah, I think it's that, that, I'm, I'm, I think that's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of, yeah, some of that, yeah, yeah. Know, um, what's going on right now, like that reason, I think, that's, um, they're paying me, I'm period, but at the same time, if you don't support the town, if you don't, if you, you've got to give a little bit. I think everybody's ready to do that. Not hurting their family, or hurting their, like, what they call. Like, not by a ring, a few times, or something, or something. It's lovely, I think, I got one more, just in the first year, what's all the purpose? Um, if, I just want to end it, if you're bored, it's wrong. It's perfect, you know? But like a man, I'm able to sort of play with mine, uh, he's really, uh, that's, uh, um, I think, that's, uh, that's, uh, that's, uh, we feel like, yeah, yeah. We're all here. It is what it is. We have, uh, have a lot of common faith, though, just, uh, we can get kids out in a fair way. If that, if you're coming. My son, uh, he has to get played, uh, for, for, for that, so. If you're, uh, if you're going, wait, I'm starting to stop there. Anybody have any comments? Uh, if you'd like to have, uh, more comments, just let me know. And if I'm talking, that's good. But uh, I hope people understand, I, I, I wasn't wanting to talk to the citizens, but if anybody sounds, that's, that's all. I think it's true, and why I need that, 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 that. I thought the comment, and I have a vote, and you close, so. All opposed, aye. All opposed, aye. Aye, aye. Then now, I think we got, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, for twenty twenty-two, that's a, um, more appropriate time, ready, ready, we can get to July one, twenty twenty-two, thirty, thirty. Tom, enter to have a vote, and sit through it. Tom, sit through it. All in favor, aye. All opposed, aye. Aye, aye. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item seven B, public here number two. Public here for the purpose to consider race and act upon the proposed text, and that was Article five, for the creation of property districts. Black, violet, purple, blue, base, and shift, for protection, testing waters, coastal wetlands.
So, uh, as the first of ours, for the community planning board, would view proposed tax limits for creation of conservation zone district. Uh, those amendments are proposed through early approval. Uh, ultimately, they, uh, designate a new conservation zone district described in section five, one, dot eleven of the ordinance. Uh, and allows limited uses, uh, in the zone district. Uh, mainly boat launching, ranch, livestock, livestock gear, public. And also public parks, playgrounds, play fields, community centers, and outdoor recreation. Uh, those will only be allowed by special use permit. So, any development would be reviewed by planning board, ultimately, if through the body, you guys get order from the missions. Uh, the language that describes the new zone district is similar to Lehman's ordinance. Uh, their language for their conservation zone district. Uh, this new language also has proposed setbacks, uh, for requirements, as shown in table five point two. Uh, you take fifteen, sixteen, the package that you have. Uh, all of those setbacks match the town's setbacks for public institution district. Uh, with the exception of maximum structure height, that's the last line in the table. Uh, which has been set thirty-five feet. And that's matching or lowers, uh, max structure height value in all the other districts in the town. Uh, as opposed to setting in Devo, so what's public institution district, that was seventy feet. Uh, which is not considered to be desirable for conservation type development. Um, some other minor backgrounds. Uh, Lehman's Conservation District allows similar uses. Uh, public parks, playgrounds, play fields, community center. And then four others that they list that are all related to water facilities. Um, basically not prohibiting any of those community conservation districts. Uh, they don't have any setbacks, except for their particular community district. Uh, and then Wilmington was another one the planning board looked at. Uh, they designated, instead of having those conservation zone districts, they have what they call conservation resources. Uh, they have a category forum, that's the name of a couple of, whether it's wetlands or marsh areas, primary nursery areas, et cetera. Uh, and has to be expected, uh, Wilmington ordinance for the district more complicated than, uh, say, we won't, we, we even have, uh, depends on how far you are away from that conservation resource, et cetera, uh, for what requirements need to be met, so. Uh, and then lastly, as I mentioned, the planning board also looks at Gary, the town of Gary, who isn't in Raleigh. Uh, and they have a conservation residential recovery district, so that will be applied to our residential areas. That's to get some background on the difference. Language the planning board looked at, and also reports, uh, the way Lehman had to set up, was down with the monolith, I want to.
Thank you, Jeff. I had comments from the head.
Not while we're looking at, and I think Jeff did it. Uh, looking at the area where we live at, folks in the river, the Eagle Island, across the front, the river from us. Wetlands, natural beauty we have here. A lot of this needs to be preserved, and just one way we can assist in preservation, help and maintain environments that we have, that people can enjoy. And some of these properties coming into our legal limits, uh, we can use this or protect those lands for my fairies, but people can, so they can go out and camp or sit or walk trails and enjoy what we have here. And that's one reason we want to vote this, having off hand, but if we take property and we do have wetlands in place that need to be preserved, that we should preserve, but, uh, I'm going forward to it. But right now, I'm going to have a motion that we open, uh, from the end, and rest of the board, when we come to that, uh, we should say.
Yes, but, all in favor, aye. All opposed, aye. Aye, aye, you know, like, making comments on your board. If I could have a motion, we'd like to come here. All in favor, aye. All opposed, aye. Aye, aye. Thank you. It's not a no, it's a question, that I'm looking at for order from twenty twenty-two, that's a six order, and then Article five, long different in uses and minimal classes on order, which creates a long distance classified, I'm, I can't even say it. Conservation District for protection of the efforting waters, coastal wetlands. All in favor, aye. All opposed, aye. Aye, aye. Thank you. I think we have a consistency statement that can be drawn on that as well. This statement for the Beverly Ward Commission, would be a case of, Article five is on the order. Which, uh, just, I'll be able to do the call, and the Beverly Ward Commission, what it is, and I have a motion, that's a consistent statement. All in favor, aye. All opposed, aye. Aye, aye. Thank you all for that. We look forward to the ability to help preserve a lot of the other, uh, properties that hopefully will be coming into the town further, and different resources.
Okay, moving on to seven C, public here number two. Public here for the purpose to consider race and act upon the proposed text, and that was Article five, long distance, requirement, for purpose of increasing the maximum density in central business, multi-family, long distance, uh, gift, my thanks, that's clear. Uh, so the planning board has reviewed and is ultimately recommending approval of, uh, these proposed tax amendments. Uh, changing the allow maximum dwelling unit density for developments of multi-family and central business districts. Uh, the town's current ordinance allows ten dwelling units per acre for both of those districts. In table five point two. Uh, with the caveat, uh, the C D D district, uh, has in my table, shows, uh, unless otherwise allowed per overlay district. Um, and the proposed amendment is increasing that ten dwellings per, ten dwelling units per acre, obviously sixteen dwelling units per acre for both of those zoning districts. Uh, that caveat for the C D D district, that's related to Article seven, which describes the town's overlay districts. Uh, mainly the downtown overlay district and the Blackwell Road overlay district. Uh, and as Article seven, uh, sets allow density for the downtown overlay district, ranging from sixteen to ninety-six units per acre. Uh, that's depending on the zone height, whether it's A, B, C, or S, D zoning, uh, or X, D zones. Um, be the mind that there has been development in that downtown overlay district, and question, I'm, I'm really implementing those ordinance requirements, uh, regardless of timing, but. Uh, there's no language in the Blackwell Road overlay district regarding density. So it's only the downtown overlay district that has the caveat of density in Article seven. So, uh, for the Blackwell Road overlay district, since there's nothing in Article seven, uh, that table five point two applies to that overlay district as well. Um, for reference, that table five point two, it allows thirty units per acre in the somewhat newly created P R Business Residential District. And just for context, less relevantly, uh, three point three units per acre in the R ten Residential District. And two point five units per acre in the R fifteen Residential District. Um, the R fifteen district is not legalized in the town, and property that is owned by R fifteen, or is a zoning district that is within the order. Um, just for a little bit of background, uh, Lehman's ordinance allows sixteen units per acre in their multi-family district. Uh, they also have some language about assisted living facilities, of senior living, community, of senior care, is allowed at thirty units per acre. And independent living facility within a senior living community with senior care. Uh, twenty-four units per acre, so assisted, or independent, or independent facility. Uh, Wilmington's ordinance, I've shown in the memo here, have several different density allowances. Uh, again, has to be expected, uh, Wilmington ordinance, it's a little bit more complicated. Uh, they have four different multi-family districts, and I showed those, the different densities they allow, table here, I don't know. Uh, ultimately, they're from six to thirty-six in that table, for those, uh, different multi-family district. And then they also have a U N X served mixed use district. Uh, with the density shown there, uh, one for none, so it's fifteen to single family, twenty-five for multi-family. Uh, and then, there's a lot more language in Wilmington's ordinance, uh, doesn't really make a lot of sense to cover here, but it's worth mentioning that their C D D central business district allows a hundred units per acre. Uh, that could be compared to the ninety-six units per acre that I mentioned earlier for the downtown overlay district density zone. Uh, and then it's also worth mentioning that the next sentence in Wilmington's ordinance says, density decrease above one hundred units per acre may be allowed if, for additional public benefit or features are provided as outlined in section one ninety-six. Uh, some benefits matrix, uh, point being that they allow above a hundred units per acre in certain cases. Uh, so given all that, um, the ranges of municipalities that were reviewed for the start of ten units per acre and go up to a hundred, was more of a typical, being around, uh, fifteen, seventeen units per acre. That ultimately, out of the planning board, resolved to, uh, propose to be eighteen per acre, in favor of Article two.
Any comments from the mission?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you, and the planning board, uh, because we know how difficult these things can be. I'm not aware of the need, that's explaining to them, while they're understanding the facts of what's going on. In the realm where everything is kind of consistent, that our areas that we draw a wedge, say that, probably, so.
Public comment, do they have a motion, to vote in public here, for, for, uh, twenty twenty-two, that's seven? All in favor, aye. All opposed, aye. Aye, aye. If you have any comments, moving on. Public on order, twenty twenty-two, that's seven. If you have comments, uh, do they have a motion, to vote in public comments? All in favor, aye. All opposed, aye. Aye, aye. Uh, looking at Jeff's, and I have a vote for set order, twenty twenty-two, that's seven. In accordance with the document text, and in proportion to Article five, long distance, and heavy duty, and mission requirement. So the zone order for the purpose to increase the maximum density residence per acre in the central business and multi-family, is all these questions. All in favor, aye. All opposed, aye. Aye, aye. Okay, we also have a consistency statement for that. Um, these things are kind of Beverly Ward Commission review, for again, Article five is a long important. Uh, if y'all have a chance to read that, and I know that I have a motion, that's a consistent statement. All in favor, aye. All opposed, aye. All favor, I, although I have, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to aisle eight, obviously, in the, uh, there on the Rock River, he was, he's personally there, uh, in the, remember that, uh, uh, panel, yeah, on the, cloud. Cloud, he's, uh, doing a part of the red, red light, red, red, on the system. Yeah, you want to say a thing, Tom?
Tom, okay. He's watching, he's not bad. Oh, yeah, that's, I love to see. Uh, my name is, uh, Ethan Fox, uh, we down here about a year ago, uh, from Greenwater, Carolina, uh, started with the town three weeks ago, um, I'm glad to be here, I live right on the street in Hollis Court, uh, so I'm a Bay Harbor resident, uh, glad to be here, glad to bring my wealth and knowledge, I have about nine years of park director experience, along with thirty one years, uh, growing up in park direct, uh, so I've got vast knowledge and background and anything that we could do, I got some ideas in hand, uh, again, working on for the future, uh, for the parks, for the downtown and, uh, things like that. I'm an open book, I'm very easy to talk to, uh, if you have any questions, please feel free to talk to me. I work well with Jim, uh, so him and I get along and we go back and forth with new ideas, so, uh, I'm glad to be here, thank you for having me, uh, and, uh, I look forward to working with the town and seeing where we can take this, so. Anyway.
Would you like to thank you for being here and looking at this park, getting around the park, family, park, family. We look forward to, uh, looking at, looking at them, with the caveat on board, uh, look forward to trying to stand here. We're, 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 we know that, uh, with everything that's happening in our park, uh, five, around, what we can do. And not only that, but everything's going on in the town, in a great mind, a great, uh, perspective, something to look at, to fly along, uh, and, uh, like they welcome this, and, uh, of course. Thank you. Um, so it all adds to the, uh, 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 the, once they do all that, they're kind of doing a rebranding of our, uh, park, just in front of the park, that's a little bit of Bayville, a little part. We thought, uh, we could go ahead and make that name, uh, things to sign out, come down to, and our name brand. Like I told everybody else, I had someone ask me, uh, a huge person asked where the name of Bayville came from. And, uh, you know, you always think deep, just put it in the box, say, I'll have to get back to you. Well, I tried to, now, the name of Bayville goes all the way back to the Revolutionary War. At the end of the Revolutionary War, a bunch of generals had fought for water, and when the given land ran, John Mads, was given land ran here, which turned out to be a sea, or like you'd see the Bayville plant station. But he lived in town three, that's town three, a land back in John Mads, fought Revolutionary War. So he had a daughter, she was named Sarah. Sarah, Sarah married a gentleman here in John, what else, which was called the Brock family, that all over plant station, and also a lot of property up here, his daughter was the one that named Bayville, Bayville. Which was spent off in the Bayville plant station, that roughly in about seventeen seventy nine, seventeen eight, that happened. A lot of different, a lot of playhomes and chores, water, sales, and business, this location, probably kind of, uh, the, 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 he had here, fought in the Revolutionary War. So it goes back to, you know, we got this song, which is everything, uh, it backs up where our names came from. But at least now, I'm happy after all these years, that now I know. We're looking alive, you know? And, uh, you want to see one, pretty sunrise, and over here, it comes down right off the lake, and then every morning, you got full sun, but, sure. I'm gonna sit there, just watch it come up, see it come, just like you're looking at a river, sun right now, and see how deep the water is. In the first moment, it's like, like, it's, 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 like, well, now, now, we should, uh, we should stop here, and then, uh, we'll, 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 uh, also, I know that's a good question, I think, uh, on our deal, it's a question, uh, I've got a minute, I'll wait to say it, but, uh, uh. We saw a lot of, uh, like, uh, starting to start off, uh, they were in, 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 uh, low town, long way, all that happened here, so it's a very important year, and a lot of things happened, and a lot of good surprises that may come. Um, they're like blocking into just a place in our area, that's here in our town right now, which is just for all the people here in the Bay Harbor, uh, opportunities, growth, and, uh, making red blocks and better conveniences for the people in our town to enjoy, and we hope that happens. Any comments? Any questions? Okay, moving on to the next, uh, eight three, Resilience Twenty Two Thousand Sixteen, the Resilience by Bay Harbor Board Commissioners, that is made July fourth, Recreation Month. That's down there, you want to make any comments on that?
It is that the army is on, the most, the right, all of our business has a heart for our doors, has a heart for education, exactly, all the law students, and, uh, all of our, uh, the, 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 uh, uh, you just want to, have they been one going together, and according to the, uh, the, uh, my, uh, my, uh, regulation, education and so, it's, 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 we live as a part of education, so. Thank you so much for everything that all of you have given, and that's what's part.
Thanks for the, um, um, comments on the question. It's not for the whole vote, but we serve Resilience Twenty Two Thousand Sixteen. All favor, I, although I have, thank you. Moving on to eight B, uh, update on streets and drainage prepared. I wish, uh, we were gonna take that one.
This one has no, uh, uh, that's on the town line, uh, we had moved forward with, with, uh, some, uh, some technicals, so, uh, the, 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 uh, 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 the, uh,
Is everything done to drainage prepared from ground to space on ground? I'm not supposed to be talking about the place, but that on the square. We have, we have, uh, 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 yeah, so, yeah. So, uh, from the, uh, 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 I'm hoping, uh, what we're trying to get off is, is, uh, what's going on here, is, we have water issues, and drainage issues, a lot to get on, for, but you have to kind of, uh, totally catch it before it gets destructive and we're like, preparing to fix it, uh, prevent it before, and then later, uh, so, uh, I hope to stay on top of that, and, uh, like, thanks, uh, Pat, Jeff, appreciate what you do, so, yeah, keep us up on all the stuff that goes on, you know, if you are, uh, any comments and questions. Okay, possible, move on to, uh, so, uh, my, my, my agenda for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, your budget amendment, and you don't think that?
Yes, sir, um. We're just, uh, this is the budget amendment, if you need to get it kind of put up to, uh, excess revenue to be collected, and excess, uh, to be anticipated, and, uh, I'm gonna read all these, but there's total, uh, twenty thirty six is a three hundred sixty nine thousand twenty eight dollars, and we had revenue increases at three hundred sixty nine thousand twenty eight dollars, uh, net revenue being, maybe two hundred minutes, we could go up with purchases, and, uh, it's, it's, uh, fifteen drinks, it's, uh, uh, ten hundred and twenty dollars, so, should we just put up a, like, a, 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 any comments? Do you have any other comments?
Yes, I, 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 I,
I'd like to, I'd like to have motion on the, uh, we, 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 uh, thank you, uh, that, uh, nine D, Park and Recreation, going to be, uh, tell me if you want to help out.
Yes, I, 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 I,
Okay, I'm gonna, uh, 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 Okay, moving on to nine D, Transection, update, all back to, uh, we.
Okay, we, 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 we,
You want to go ahead and nail it?
That is me. Are you ready? Yes, can you get that? Yes, perfect. Okay, and did you guys see the, 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 and, 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 and,
Yeah, pretty good, yeah.
Wonderful, well, as always, I'm going to thank you guys, uh, for the opportunity to put away on a, to, um, ten percent project that, um, was going to hold in the complex, uh, uh, state. Uh, so for today's event, uh, there is a passenger ferry, he was already studying, uh, that will recently kickoff, and then there's a few other things that's in progress, uh, that'll put his new information, but I will show you, uh, the stats for those projects. So this, um, uh, the passenger safety capability study, uh, this is something that's actually been initiated by NC State, um, industry program, so they think it's an institute for transfer fees and research and education, uh, there's a lot of research, uh, great research projects across the state, and, uh, there were a few local organizations that requested that they would go into, uh, doing a research project for passenger ferry in our area, um, so this is a work for, uh, study, uh, that will be conducted, it's not led by a specific government agency, so this isn't NC State's, um, ferry division, or any particular city, town, county, or region, um, they are expecting the study to be completed by the end of this year. And so there was a thick or event meeting, uh, that was held on June first, and this was the, the first one of four, uh, there were, I think, thirteen people that were attending, um, including myself, and that includes the East River Council of Governments, uh, the Wilmington, NCO, uh, of course, NC State, uh, industry staff, and then there were several other local government agencies that attended it, and they did all first, on the in-person meeting, but also on Zoom, I think there were only one or two people that went in person, and everybody else zoomed in. Uh, but the point of this meeting was strictly information gathering, so they were, uh, they did a whole, NC State did a whole lot more listening, uh, the, 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 talking, and they wanted to hear from, you know, all of our thoughts and ideas and strengths and opportunities around finding passenger ferries, uh, to this region. And, you know, some of the parameters that, uh, they needed to work with was that this would be a passenger ferry, not a ferry that would accommodate vehicles, so if you're thinking this ferry that just goes down port, or fixtures, you can drive your vehicle on it, and your vehicle is of course ready when you get to your destination, uh, this would be a little bit different, there's really to have parking if those into the strip, because your vehicle would not be on the field. And in the area we were looking at, they said they were willing to talk through, um, Jacksonville, North Carolina, to the South Carolina city lines, uh, but that is still a very large geographic region, so they were interested in kind of narrowing that down a little bit, and they also wanted to look at opportunities for those, um, the state for source and teachers as well. So in this meeting, we had a whole lot of things from outlets, and, um, the industry staff, they had this map, uh, that you guys can pull up, and as we were talking through ideas, uh, they were using this map to kind of jump down our necks, um, so as you can see, some of the ideas that are listed here, you know, down by my little thing, you know, wondering if that's too far away, and it probably is, uh, looking at Southport and wondering if that was even going to be, uh, a, 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 essentially, because in Southport, you get, uh, the, uh, 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 And of course, you know, there was a lot of conversations, uh, you know, looking at this area and thinking, you know, connecting density with density, so, you know, a lot of these areas are a little bit more rural nature, of course, the city of Wilmington is the largest, and then we heard a lot of people talking a whole lot more about connecting the city of Wilmington to the Battle Stiff, to Bayville, to the Bounce, uh, and down to the, the Southport, we learned more of the conversation than we did the conversation without Tocqueville Island, uh, or Philly, and such, and, and. But there were a whole lot of other things that we talked about, taking into consideration, uh, one being the size of the boat, so if you think of a boat that is very small, that might be able to navigate some of more shallow water, which would be helpful, but that actually could be problematic, uh, particularly in the Southport area, where you have the East River River, that is, we need to land a dock, and that is, we need to know, so the waterway, and the water, if there's topics, uh, for that area, you know, larger boats tend to work a little bit better, um, and of course, water's movement, you know, could be a problem as well, lots of other boat practices out there, and not just regular boats, but massive container ships as well, and then And then, you know, looking at the times that you would spend on a ferry and wondering, you know, how long would people be willing to ride on a ferry? Um, to include their heart, a heart, or a hatred, um, or to use that and do, uh, bragging their parts, or what, and, and especially what you start looking for the doors, and something that's not drawn to the line, just thinking that being a ferry most times on, once they give a ferry, well, just kind of keeping those in mind, um, this way. And then, you know, one of the other things that they talked about, or other areas, um, you know, for example, one that's now I think is what, um, is the U S seventy-four, seventy-six bridge, that there's, um, um, Bellville, so on, and, uh, it's the one right nearby, the downtown Bellville area, that one is very, um, what? So, uh, you don't know, something you have to do, so it's actually would be able to do one of that. Um, and of course, there's also a way you plan that you go with this, you know, this is a study, and it's looking into the future, then, you know, what is the opportunity to encourage development around this area that, uh, will happen a lot of, uh, this is. Um, here's putting things like, you know, hotels and shopping, and, uh, things like that want to end up this way. And then there are, uh, a few other transfer decent projects, uh, this is not any new information, I don't think, um, for you guys, so, last month, uh, we did talk through a few N T A F C projects. Um, one is the N T one thirty-three modern basin project, and we were planning here, this includes a new block in Blackwell Road. And we're also discussing here that that project is one that still, again, and a faulty intent to connect down to other, um, faulty sites that connect top water several elements. And it does look like, it happens to be, all of those projects are going to be, they're pretending to be another project, but it looks like they are all looking at, like, this one date, um, I mean, just started, and they're avoiding some of this. And then, of course, you want to, um, they're talking about things, um, you know, seeing like there's a lot of activity blowing over there between the rail alignment project and, you know, steel by line, as far as the busy develop from the west bank or not, uh, legislation opportunities that are out there, um, but if you guys probably know, applications that were first, uh, developed, will withdraw, um, from the town of Cleveland, so, uh, it's time to begin to re-ear. Re-ear is a good model, a lot of things, um, on that I like to do this month, um, and that's what it is. And for that, that is all of the transfer decent updates that I've seen guys in this annual, and to have a question, I would be happy to answer them.
Uh, yeah, um, but it's all that, this ferry, that they want, parking for the union, and the union, so the ferry too. Um, it's that something that's, uh, Bellville's, uh. Did you hear that, Adam?
Yeah, I don't know if I'm hearing that, it's a point though.
It was, uh, what is that, and if Bellville was one of the points, uh, in other words, they had to establish enough parking that's either in the ferry route, or anybody who wanted to go on that, is that correct?
Yes, so, I mean, ideally, and that will go, obviously, has that parking lot, um, that is, you know, right there providing access to the park, uh, that is exactly what they are looking for, that is definitely considered to be an opportunity.
All right, thank you. Thank you, and, uh, I think that, uh, I think if you're looking for some more information, uh, over here tonight.
Yes, and there will be three more of the stakeholder, uh, committee meetings, and, um, you know, if you guys have any, you know, thoughts and questions for the folks from the others that might do that as well. Uh, this is the next meeting is, um, in early August, early July, um, this is people that suggested as, uh, you have that information that's both as well. This is totally done by the end of this year, uh, you guys will probably be seeing, um, passenger ferry capability setting update, um, you know, for future, uh, for connection as well.
Okay, thank you, Adrian, keep us up on the form of that staff, y'all had a week, everything, what's happening. Adrian, thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you, I have a good one.
Thank you. I think if, um, if you look at, it goes, goes a lot of the law, and over there, um, place, that's, that's, get a lot more attention to this recent, there's things going on. A lot of that's good, a lot of that's real good. So, any questions, we'll move on to the next round, um, I wish I'd been on transportation, I'd say. On the W N T O board, basically, what's really happened is that there's really no new projects, either existing projects that you're talking about, and the O two now, states have come up, and we basically have to have one, a adjustment, or a funding, for some of these projects. Uh, some of the projects, they've headed a priority, and even some of these projects already in vendor, so the decisions will have to be made on those. Uh, most of those projects are in the county, in the county area, most of the projects that are here in our county right now are fine. There, there won't be any changes, it will be a change from the project, and then it will be enhanced in place, they, uh, that's pretty much all we've discussed, who's done, you know. So, any questions? Anybody? Okay, uh, moving on, um, I'm down, I was about to say, I guess, for, but, I have to, um. Again, um, C and A, North Carolina, Hill Station, one forty-three, that's three, that's eleven, eight three, turn to the location. And North Carolina, Hill Station, one forty-three, that's three, that's eleven, eight four, just matter of place, the location, one of the stations, I mean, those, um, of course, have basically done both, but, um, all face, uh, all opposed, I have it, it's about, sure. You want to get it? All right. That's all, that's all right. Now, I'm looking to come back in those, but. All in favor, I, all opposed, I have it, uh, reference to, yeah, I was gonna say, for, for the, like, making, yes, the, we managed to, like, we discussed, um, an economic development, too, actually, I guess, economic development agreements. Location, here, so you can think about, um, Mayor, did you want, is somebody interested in making a motion to modify the economic development and annexation agreement with?
If you're, uh, if you're on the, you'll get a little detailed part, I'll go ahead and, I was, okay, uh, what members are? Gregory Ford, who previously agreed or voted to enter into an economic development agreement with them in connection with annexing, which I guess we're accepting a dedication of. Gregory Road, um, they have offered to improve a four hundred and ninety-four foot section of backhoe road that intersects with it. Personally, I'm not familiar with it, but I understand from all of you that it's in terrible condition, probably, basically, followed by getting up the service, tank jobs, terrible. Um, in any event, they have offered to bring it up to the same standards, um, the proposed amendment, it entitled first amendment to economic development annexation, road dedication agreement. It's basically the same party, all it's proposing to do is to add that T section of backhoe road, that four hundred and ninety-four foot section that Mark agreed on that. So, uh, we don't have it up on the board right now, but, um, everybody's very familiar with it, we've had multiple meetings here, working meetings with, uh, with the group of folks, um, not with all of you, but to talk about how to get that section really fixed. This is the way for us to get fixed, if you're willing to, um, accept their proposal, dedication of it. Yeah, very good, so go ahead, uh, I'll make a motion that we expect the amended, the version of our great, Gregory Ford, say, great road, and the four hundred and ninety-four, ditch on, on backhoe road, uh, I'll put that motion on the floor. So, just to make it clear for, for the audience, what a little bit of audience there is, they're proposing to improve the road for us, bring it up, same standards, uh, that's the rest of it, and to improve the drainage, if we will agree to, uh, accept the proposed, um, dedication of it. And, and I, I think for all of that part's already in annexed and found or not, I think that's in our town limits.
Where can we? I'll do that, I'll put a motion for we get four hundred and ninety-four, ditch of the road, and to the agreement that we have agreed for. All in favor, I, I, all opposed, I have it, thank you all for that.
If there's no calls to that for us, that's right now, at least.
Thank you, Norwood. Thank you, uh, I appreciate, uh, what went on, the matter, that go up, get done, uh, as far as I did, and everything, I think that's going well. Any comments from staff? Any comments from the commissioners, thank you, Slav, for all the hard work you've been doing.
Any, uh, if, um, I just want to add that we are still available, Judge Henry, on the, um, page today, now, I'm not, Charles Baldwin, same on that, he did, he did update, that, uh, that we are anticipating some. Resolution that matter by the end of the week, I think, by the end of the month, which means by the end of the week for us, I pray. If it's definitely retiring, effective, uh, it's our, uh, I hope it will help, let me see. Find out something one way or another.
Um, other than that, if I'm more conscious, can I have a motion that we have done? All in favor, I, all opposed, I have it.